Good morning, everybody. I'd like to call the January 24th, 2020 informal Virginia Beach Planning Committee to start. My name's De Oliver and I'm the chairman, and I am going to hand this over to our planning director, Mr. DeHaan, to get us started.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. I realize that I did not have a microphone, so we're improvising in this. We have a few things that we need to go over today. I do want to remind the commission that I did send an email requesting if you're available for certain dates to discuss short-term rentals. I've heard from some of you. Right now, it seems like tacking on to the end of the July 8th meeting sounds like the best plan. We can go over a summary of the meeting that I had, that Ms. Wilson and I had with Chairman Oliver and Mr. Enman to provide you some background and then also kind of send us down the path that we've been requested by city council. And then when we have our discussion, we can then dive deep into it and figure out what other things the Planning Commission would like to address with short-term rentals as well. So if you want to meet earlier, we can, but if we just want to tack it on to the end of the July 8th meeting, then we can do that as new business.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. If that works, we all schedule.
Okay. There is still plenty of legwork to be done, as Mr. Weiner pointed out at the last public hearing. There is a concern to meet the deadline, so we'll continue to work and try to summarize things to make it easy in bite-sized chunks to understand for the commission as we have gotten direction from city council, and then try to break it up in a way that you can give us direction on each of the things that we can work on.
Great.
Do apologize. We had forgotten to bring the printed copies of the staff reports for those that needed additional copies and for the public, so we are sending staff to go get that right now. So I do apologize for that. Being in two different, being away from the campus and actually having an in-person hearing messed us up. I will tell you, we had paper copies when no one was here. But it's how it works out sometimes, so it's okay. First up, we have, Ms. Oliver, unless you have any comments for the commission?
I do not. I think we have a long day ahead of us, so let's just go ahead and jump in.
Yes, ma'am. So our presentation today is a comprehensive plan update. As you know, before we got sidetracked with a pandemic and a number of other things, we were on our way to Phase 2 of our public outreach for the comprehensive plan. We then had to regroup and try to understand what that means as we engage the public moving forward. One, with our ability to have large meetings, and two, with the ability to meet people when there's a concern of meeting in public. So I'll hand it over to Mark Share, Comprehensive Planning Coordinator, to take away on this presentation.
All right. Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, Ms. Chair, Chairwoman, and the members of the Planning Commission. I have a quick PowerPoint to update you on a number of activities that are going on. We're really getting hot and heavy into the public input phase. Next slide. Just wanted to let you know what happened. Basically, we were poised and ready to go with those pop-up meetings, and we had that exercise that dealt with housing densities throughout the city. We had actually gone to three or four of the meetings throughout the city at rec centers and different places where there was a lot of public, and the idea was to engage with the public. And so we definitely had to scrap that whole aspect of a public engagement. And then also, we've had to delay doing any kind of public meetings as well. So right now, we're moving into Phase 2 of the input, and we've changed it from having the pop-up meetings to having a more virtual input through more survey questions to build upon the survey that was done last fall. And we can still accomplish the plan, the policy document completion by the end of 2021. We just won't have as much cushion with that. Next. This slide, just as a reminder, and I think I sent an abbreviated presentation a couple weeks ago when I sent out the link to the story map, but this is just kind of a reminder of the different sections of the plan that you volunteered to shepherd through the public input phase and through the policy document phase. So we'll be meeting more frequently in the fall to start work on the policy document. And just wanted to let you know, this is the sign-up, so just let me know if there is any mistakes or if you wanted to change anything. There are a couple chapters that just have one person, the military, and the historic cultural resources. So if anyone, we put the limit at two per person, so if you've only signed up for one, you could, you know, if you can think about the other two, that'd be great. But just get back with me at the end of the presentation or some other time if you're interested. Next slide.
One second. So, Ms. Oliver, just to tack on to that, the reason why we assigned or we requested two participants from the Planning Commission was essentially to be a liaison for each of the sections, as a reminder, and to kind of give guidance and buy-in as we move forward. So we're not trying to write a document and say, "Here you go. Here it is." We want your guidance each step of the way. And as you know, we can have two commissioners meet and kind of provide that guidance without having to do a whole public hearing, public meeting. So that's the goal of that, to make sure we stay on task.
The big event over the last few months in my world, and especially with our GIS technicians and administrators, has been working on this story map that I sent out the link a couple weeks ago. It's a pretty massive undertaking, a lot of interactive maps. However, the amount of content is actually less than what was in the 2016 technical document. So we did actually do some streamlining. And this document, I have it kind of arranged by all the chapters here on the slide, and the chapters line up with what you saw on the earlier slide about the assignments. The two additional chapters are, there's an introduction section, and that's going to be basically talking about what the plan is and also be a formalized public input chapter where the survey results are going to be housed. So someone can look at that and then also look at the data and statistical content that was used in developing the policy document. So I appreciate all the staff help that I received on this document. It was really the perfect project to be working from home on because there's just a lot of work on the computer and back-and-forth team meetings, so it was, it was an exciting, fun project. And right now, it's under review, so if you have any comments, we're hoping to get this posted at the beginning of July, so if you have any concerns with any of the content or if you notice any mistakes, please let me know, and I'll get those changed. Next slide. And there's 10 different sections. We added that new section, the very last section on city services. That was a challenge because there's so many city services. So hopefully, we hit the mark in having the right amount of information on that. And then on the previous slide, there was a chapter, the new chapter for historic and cultural resources added as well. And I think that was a good enhancement because it talked about how lively the city is, a little bit more than just the nitty-gritty planning information. So I think that was a good complement to the project. Next slide. Now to the next steps in our public outreach. We completed the very general input survey in November 2019. This is the one that we had over 3,000 responses to. Over the month of December, a lot of the questions were automatically tabulated by publicinput.com, but over the month of December, I tallied several thousand open-ended comments, and those were very valuable in developing the five detailed survey questions that we're going to talk about in a minute, which is the Phase 2. They all came about based on comments from this public outreach and also just from our experiences as planners of what the hot issues are as well. And then we're hoping that that will go live on publicinput.com in July, and then we're meeting tomorrow to start preparations for how we want to do our public meetings. We're talking right now about doing a combination of virtual and open public meetings. So probably at least two virtual because of the amount of content, and we're going to have at least one public meeting in a very large facility that we can still do the social distancing. But then hopefully in August, things will be looking better in that respect, too. Next slide. Now going to the questions. I mentioned earlier that this built upon the survey from 2019 that was very general in nature. With the publicinput.com, we're going to be allowed to do a little bit of introduction before the question to help frame it better so people understand the content, context of how the question arose from the earlier survey, and then some maybe basic information that'll help with their answers. And I'm working with the communications office on what to include there. And we also did get some comments from a council member last week that we're talking about and how to phrase the questions properly. So we're still under review with both communications and with councils, so there's still time if you have input on any changes you'd like to see on these questions, especially from a content standpoint. Next slide. Okay, the actual questions now, you'll recognize this first question is a derivative of the pop-up meeting, which talked about the housing styles, basically densities throughout the city, and got all the different categories on this one slide that was on the poster board that we were going to take out to the pop-up meetings. We decided to scrap the locational aspect of that. We actually did get a little bit of confusion of that when we went to the first few pop-up meetings. So it kind of worked out well as a question that'll go on publicinput.com because we can include pictures as well as the answer selection on the screen. So this will get at the variety of housing styles we have in this city and then whether there's a diversion to anything in particular or if there's an overwhelming choice to a certain housing style. So that would handle the first question. Next. Second one, and this was in the 2016 plan as a topic in the suburban chapter about what to do with retail centers that were needing revitalization. And I think some of that may accelerate a little bit more, especially with the pandemic that some of these areas are struggling. And as a long-range planner, I do get calls occasionally about redevelopment and what would be appropriate if someone was to redevelop some of these older neighborhood commercial centers. So similar to the first question, we use the same pictures to provide information about if a strip retail center was to be replaced, would you like to see medium-density mixed use? I didn't include the high-density there because that's more for the SGA's and the town center areas. There's a choice for medium-density multifamily, which is not a high-rise, but a little bit more than just having attached housing like the townhouses. But then there's also office as a category and, of course, remaining retail. So that's to kind of get at the public's preferences there, particularly outside the SGA areas. Next one. This topic came up quite a bit in the survey, and it came up a lot when we, the parks planner did the active transportation plan, which is underway right now. It's dealing with connections for bicycling pedestrians and what would be appropriate. And we kind of looked at it from, for the comp plan question, as what the planning department can do to achieve these goals as opposed to the big projects where they're doing a capital project to add a bike lane or a bike path or something major, a complete sidewalk here. It's more like when the developments are being reviewed, or there are certain little things that you can do to make the connections better. The first picture deals with connecting neighborhoods to activity centers. I saw three really good examples around the city. This is the connection between Kellum High School and the neighborhood just to the west, and I'm not sure the name of that again, but it's a very nice pathway, and then school controls the access with a gate. And there's a similar one out at, with Kimpsville High School, and then there's a very nice one between Thoroughgood and the Bayside Recreation Center that goes through Church Point, and I'm assuming that happened through a development review decision, the way the design of that was looking. So the idea to have more of those as an answer to that question. Another one is more of a little academic exercise that planners do, is that if you have more connected streets, not just having a connection for bike and ped, but with cars that you can, you know, reduce traffic and make trips shorter. Of course, there are some people that might oppose that, that they don't want more traffic on other roads, so you'd have to have a lot of connections. So that provides a lot of opportunity for, you know, debate and different answers. The idea of having more mixed uses and that people don't have to walk as far to get to destinations if they're in the same building or right next door. And then also, there's a big push to have, you know, the first mile, last mile of transit as very pedestrian, bike-oriented. And also, with our city services section, we're really hitting hard. We've got a lot of input that people want to have destinations close to where they live, you know, the five or 10-minute walk or driving distance to get to libraries and schools, parks, et cetera. All right, next one. This one, trying to get at a lot of different emerging transportation solutions. Motor scooters were a hot topic last year, and there was a lot of survey that was done on that, but didn't want to leave it out because it is one of the, you know, the more out-front kind of technologies there, so we're including it again this time. Also, there's been cooperations with traffic apps to do cooperative agreements and work with, I know something in the Water Festival last year, there was a lot of discussion with ways about how to improve traffic responses there. We've been studying autonomous vehicles and researching how they could be effective in the future. Our parking division has done a lot with smart parking apps, so you don't have to spend time driving around looking for a parking space, and you can get to it quicker. Bike-share programs are popping up, is kind of similar to the motor scooter programs. On-demand partnerships, that would be like with Uber or Lyft. I know HRT is looking at a similar type issue with their future transit services that some areas might be better served by this type of service. And then there's car-share partnerships like with Zipcar. So kind of taking a little different approach on the transportation question for this part of the survey. Next one. And now the most difficult one of all, and it was too difficult to figure out an easy way to show pictures to explain this question, but the number-one concern from the fall survey was the loss of open space in the city and people wanting to keep the natural environment upfront and present throughout the city. And another big concern, of course, with the multi-year sea level-wise study, was the protection of the flood areas, especially with sea level rise and making sure that in the future, when additional lands may flood, that the land is protected. So this question was geared to try to get at that solution. It's a kind of a difficult one to get onto publicinput.com because they like to have very simple answers that are very understandable, and you can't have too many graphics to kind of lead people to the answers. So the first one is to preserve open space by providing tax incentives for landowners. That's basically the conservation easement program, but I was told that that might be too much for the definition to have that in there. So, but basically, that's where you, by giving up your rights to develop the land, you save money on taxes, basically, a little bit similar to the agricultural reserve program. The second question is to continue policies to direct growth to strategic growth areas. And the whole idea of that was that we are providing an area for development to be really preferred in the city, and that way, there wouldn't be as much pressure to spread out into areas that may be more environmentally sensitive. So that's kind of just a continuation of our whole SGA concept. C takes us a little bit further in the sense that there's a program called Transfer Development Rights, and the wording of the question was to try to make it more understandable to the public, but to allow developers that are in flood zone areas to sell development potential to developers that are building in less flood zone areas. This would take a lot of analysis and research, and it was highlighted in the sea level-wise recommendations report as well, but this one would take a lot of future action even after the comp plan is completed, but trying to get at that. The next option is for zoning regulations to provide incentives to protect flood zone areas. A lot of cities in the country now are, you have your basic requirements that people have to meet, but if they, if they provide some extra incentives to protect flood areas, then you can relax certain restrictions in the zoning ordinance. So again, this one would take a lot of additional study, but the idea in the, for the comp plan is to get the policy into the document to enable the further study to be pursued. And so I don't know if Bobby had anything to add on like question five, but...
That question is the most difficult one and probably the one with the most legwork to actually put regulations to. There are a lot of ideas, like you said, as Mark said, there's guidance from some of the documents that we've, that we've just adopted from, by city council and by the commission, the sea level-wise document, as well as a few other studies that they are, that team has been working on. So figuring out how to make it work and then, on paper, and then in a regulatory way, and then also having enough to people to make it work. Transfer development rights is not an easy concept, one, it's not an easy concept to understand, and, two, it's hard to carry out because you need people tracking it, you need people paying attention to who sold what to who, and then you also have to say, "We're going to limit development," and tell people, "If you want to build more, you have to go buy it from somewhere else." So we would actually have to say, "This is your limit, and then if you want to build higher and more, you need to go buy out something that's more prone to get more density or to get more height or to get more of something." So there's a lot of mechanics to it, and it can be very difficult. We struggled with that question for a long time to figure out how to get the public's input on it. We do know it's very clear that the public wants us to do something, but that next step forward is hard. It's very technical.
Mark, I might add that the transfer development rights, that's not a new issue. We tried that back, well, close to 30 years ago, it was the early 90s.
Oh, wow.
Before the development of the ag reserve program, and we went all the way to Richmond because that required state legislation change, and we got shot down big time, and that's the reason we came back and developed the ag reserve program that we have today, because we got shot down with the transfer development. We thought that was the way to go.
Oh, wow. That's good.
But that was in, that was in the early 90s because the ag reserve program was developed in the mid-90s.
Okay.
Yeah. Plus, that's a form of litigation. And I don't see the mitigation possible, like just like putting hands on a paper, drawing a pen, and then cut your hand off and say, "That's litigation." You're not creating that. That's already there, Zina's job. Maybe it's the site that you're talking about. I think that's one of the reasons that we go forward.
I think that...
We looked at it a long time.
Okay, yeah, I'll look into the topics and talk with Katie Moore about it, too, from the state end, but, yeah, definitely, the first two choices are, you know, much easier and are actually being done, but, and I was told by Public Works that there already is a voluntary program for people to put up their property that floods frequently. So the big thing I have for the group for today is that the focus would be to get me comments on the story map and these five questions. The communications office is still working with the five questions to make them simplified and fit in the platform for publicinput.com. So especially if there's any content that you wanted, it's one of these, you just don't like the type of solution, to let me know, and we can talk about it. As far as like the wordsmithing of the question itself, that's probably going to change with the communications office, and I will email out the final version of those questions before it goes live on public input. And the same thing with the story map, is that it will go live on our webpage. Of course, you can always make changes, even after it's on the webpage, it's just a little bit more difficult, so I want to get as many solutions to that before that happens that I can. I'm starting to work with David about the public meetings, and we have our first meeting tomorrow with Kevin and others to talk about how to do the virtual meetings versus in-person meetings. And so we're starting to organize for that in August, so I'll try to come back to the group in July sometime to talk more about the public meetings, and then come back in September to talk about our plans to actually divide up and to have our specific topic area meetings to start developing the policy document. So if there are any other questions, that'll be my presentation.
Thank you, Mark.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That's all the briefings we have, Ms. Oliver. We can move forward into the public hearing preview.
All right.
And just as a reminder, and I know that we had a real quick tutorial during one of the slides, but we are still showing this on WebEx and on television as well, so as a reminder, please make sure your microphones are on when you speak, or else it won't show up that you were speaking or talking during the WebEx. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good morning. The first item is William Mark Conboy, and this is an application for a conditional use permit for a residential kennel located at 3285 Indian Creek Road. The applicant is requesting to care for up to 30 dogs on the 13.97 acre parcel. The applicant is expecting to keep 21 dogs on the property, mostly beagles and foxhound crosses, three of which are companion dogs, two beagles and one black lab. However, the request is to care up to 30 dogs, as the number may fluctuate because the owner would like to care for puppies over the age of six months just to see their potential as hunting dogs. The applicant is proposing to construct a 12-foot by 60-foot kennel on the property to house the dogs, similar to the structure constructed at the owner's previous residence in Chesapeake. The kennel will be located 100 feet from the property line and over 1,000 feet from the nearest adjacent single-family dwelling. Per Section 223 of the zoning ordinance, the use is required to be located 100 feet or more from the property line of any adjacent lot unless the animals are kept in a soundproof, air-conditioned building. The placement of this kennel meets the distance requirement of Section 223 of the zoning ordinance. Staff received one call from an adjacent neighbor on Baum Road. He was not in opposition. His property is actually directly to the south of this parcel, is a larger parcel, and it's wooded, and his major concern was the noise, and he was concerned that the owner would use his property for hunting purposes, and we assured him that he would not. The applicant met with the neighbors along Indian Creek Road regarding his request. Three letters of support were received, two from adjacent property owners, and the other from the applicant's veterinarian. Staff is recommending approval of the requests, subject to the conditions in the report. That concludes my summary, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Yes, Don?
First, Ms. Wilson, I need to disclose that I do farm two or three acres of this Mr. Conboy's property, but it has nothing to do with the dogs. And I will be voting on it because I don't think there's any monetary interest there.
Do you get more than $5,000 from this?
No, I wish.
I'm sure.
But anyway, I wanted to say that Mr. Conboy has talked to me various times about this situation, and he's been a neighbor, his family's been neighbors of ours for many years down the road from us, and they've had this situation in, just over the line in Chesapeake and hadn't caused any problems there. And he's moving to Virginia Beach now, so we're gaining a Virginia Beach resident and Virginia Beach taxpayer, so I think that this application deserves to be put on the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you.
Nobody's got to read it.
No. We're not reading.
Not reading.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Let me go to the next slide, please. This next item is located along South Military Highway, just north of Indian River intersection. This 3,300-square-foot lot is developed with a car wash facility, which received a conditional use permit in 2007. The applicant is requesting a modification of conditions to the car wash facility to redevelop the site with a new 3,300-square-foot car wash building with 13 vacuum stations. Next slide, please. Get one more slide, please. The submitted concept plan depicts reducing the number of ingress egress access points to one along the southern property line. That's next to the pharmacy there, directly to the south. This eliminates the ingress egress along the eastern portion of the property line. The required parking spaces meet the zoning ordinance's requirements. The existing... This eliminates the ingress egress along the eastern portion of the property line. The required parking spaces meet the zoning ordinance's requirements. The existing street frontage trees on the property are to remain. Four trees and multiple shrubs are provided. Additional landscape review will occur at site, final site plan review. Next slide, please. The site was part of a larger proffered conditional rezoning request to build the adjacent pharmacy, and it required exterior building material colors to be primarily natural earth tones. The building is designed with synthetic wood and a brick facade. Next slide, please. Two pay stations for the car wash have a curb canopy. Next slide. The modification of conditions request is acceptable. There are multiple properties along this portion of South Military Highway that are commercially zoned and support retail, service, and industrial uses. The proposed orientation of the building locates the vacuum stations away from both the road and the residences behind it and limits that visibility from South Military Highway. The quality building materials and color scheme meet the standards found in the existing proffered agreement as well as the recommendations in the Military Highway Corridor Suburban Focus Area. The investment in redeveloping the site will contribute to enhancing this corridor as outlined in the comprehensive plan, which states that redeveloped uses should improve the aesthetics of the corridor and with high-quality building design, signage, and landscaping. Staff has recommended a condition to limit hours from eight AM to eight PM. This is what they want to go with anyway, so that is great. And that will limit exposure to the Westview Village neighborhood to the east, which is about a hundred and fifty feet away. Next slide, please. There is a legally non-conforming freestanding electronic display sign on the site, consistent with how we deal with removal of all non-conforming signs. Staff has recommended a condition for this removal to bring the site into compliance with the zoning ordinance. The applicant is agreeable to this replacement of this sign. There is no known opposition for this request. And staff recommends approval of the application, subject to the conditions as listed. The applicant is agreeable to these conditions. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Um, looking at the overall site plan, I think the vacuums are on the side, correct? They're not facing the street.
Correct.
And I go by here quite a bit. There's landscaping is pretty thick right there, too. So you're not seeing the building.
Right, there's like a double row of trees there in the front.
Correct. I think you've done really a job about hiding the the vacuums, vacuums from the street. We really tried to do that in the past. So I'm good with this being non-consent.
Any other questions?
Do you have any complaints of the neighborhood behind there?
No, ma'am, no calls, no letters, no, nothing. And it's been a car wash since for over thirteen years, I believe, or twelve years. Yeah.
Just one thing is, is this prototype for the there's the aesthetics, I mean, I'm not necessarily saying that they're maybe bad. I mean, all all along Military Highway is it's kind of eclectic, you know, mix of commercial and other businesses. But one thing on the the schematic, it says on page eight, in the elevation views, it says Portsmouth, Virginia. Is that is that just where they're located, or is that?
I believe they do have another car wash that probably used this example in Portsmouth.
Okay. Did um, so the the color schemes, it's earth kind of.
Yes, the vacuums are a little bright. They are green. However, the building itself is a wood tone and a light gray tone, which are marked on the elevation as well.
Right. And so staff finds that acceptable to?
Yes, and it meets the standards of the proffers as well.
Standards of existing proffers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Anybody else? Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you. I also have the next item, item three. This next item is located on South Plaza Trail at Brenneman Farm Shopping Center. Next slide, please. And then one more slide. Thank you. First here is requesting to build a new fuel center with a kiosk, a small kiosk on a vacant out parcel at the shopping center. Next slide. The fuel sales requires a conditional use permit for automobile service station. Next slide. The exterior of the kiosk and fuel canopy is depicted with red brick exterior and green standing seam metal roof. White channel letter signage is proposed on the fuel canopy. And next slide, please. An eight-foot-tall monument-style sign with a red brick base is proposed at the corner with the stoplight there on South Plaza Trail. Next slide. The depicted plant material appears to satisfy the required street frontage, parking, and dumpster landscaping requirements of the Virginia Beach Landscaping Guide. Parking meets the standards of the zoning ordinance. The applicant is proposing outdoor merchandising and vending machines near the kiosks and propane cages along the side yard of the lot. The proposed request is acceptable. The proposed use is appropriate for the existing shopping center as it will provide, excuse me. It will enhance the commercial services for the surrounding community, provide available services. The site layout, landscaping, architectural elevations, materials, and signage provide for a high-quality out parcel that meets the intent of the comprehensive plan and the conditional use permit for the Brenneman Farm Shopping Center. Next slide, please. Though approval is recommended for the automobile service station, staff does not support the outdoor vending and merchandising be permitted on the site as depicted on the concept planned in elevations. Historically, conditional use permits for automobile service stations have been conditioned to exclude vending machines and outdoor merchandising outside of the building to help maintain orderly and attractive sites. The retail design guidelines further state that vending machines shall not be visible from a public street and that if vending machines are present, building facades should include an area screen from public streets, but visible to security personnel. Staff recommends a condition to prohibit these machines and merchandising as they will be visible from the right-of-way, which is not meeting this guideline. The applicant is not agreeable to this prohibition. Staff recommends approval of this application, subject to the to the conditions listed in the report. Go to one more slide, please. And I did receive a phone call and letter from a resident across the street in the condominium development. And they are, they don't necessarily have opposition to this request or support support to this request, but they continue to face traffic concerns at that intersection to their neighborhood. It's the one intersection that feeds all of these houses or these dwellings. And they feel that putting this use here would just exacerbate this concern. And they have signed up to speak. And that is my summary. I will be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, David.
I I've been here six and a half years doing this. Since I've been here, I know we've done three Krogers, a couple Harris Keaters, a number of gas stations. And this is the first time that we've talked about no vending machines. Now, I understand, I've backed up Jimin by a couple here in the last few days. Let's look at this and quite a few out there. Is there a particular, did this did this just come up? Did we decide to do this? Has it been there? We just haven't done it in the past?
We've done it for about about at least the past decade or so. I know I've done three gas stations that all had this in there. And we looked at other similar grocery store uses that had the gas station out there.
So are they doing it illegal legally, or that they put some type of cover up?
It could be. And then zoning hasn't seen it or been notified to address that concern typically.
If the if the applicant is willing to put some type of cover up or or block up, block up the street, are we going to begin with that?
We can certainly ask that, or you can certainly ask them.
I know we're going to hear it.
I can get in touch with the applicant before the meeting.
Okay.
Anybody else? Yes, Jack.
I applaud that. I mean, I I say, you know, I don't think screening, I mean, if we can maintain, you know, the practice that we've been doing with you know, if we haven't been allowing them, if we have putting conditions in there, then, I mean, I'm I'm for we just keep it with that condition as is with Alan. Without the need for screening. So I'm I'd be in favor of just keeping it the way it is.
I agree with Jack, but we're going to do it for them. We got to do it for, we don't do it for the other people. What do we do?
I mean.
What do we do for the other people, Jonathan? I mean, I'm just, you know, I mean, if we did it for one person, we got to do it for the other.
Yeah, I think we need to be consistent.
Yeah. And when's the last time?
The condition's always been in there. It's just they're not abiding to the condition. And so he hadn't picked up on it.
I would like to mention, excuse me, we did find one other conditional use permit for automobile service station that did not have that condition in it, but it was an oversight on staff's part. So there is that precedent out there.
Jack?
The the ingress egress for that is is right next to the intersection of South Plaza. So, you know, person may be talking about, you know, that lives across the street in the Brenneman Farm, those townhomes. But what are your thoughts on that access right there at the at the corner of the intersection? And maybe you address that, and maybe it's, I mean, there's the back access, but then there's that one that's right there. Do you think that would detract or impact the the traffic on the for this property?
I take this bad boy off. Although, Mr. Horstley, this is for you. So the the access point, where it's located there on the private drive aisle, we really don't have an input on the access point because it is on a private accessway and not on a public roadway. We encourage the developer. We encourage the engineer to move the entrance back a little bit further because where it's located right now, they really won't have a chance to get into the queue. If there is a queue to to wait to get out, they really won't have a chance to get into the queue because they're so close to the intersection. Again, it's a recommendation. We can't require it because it doesn't affect traffic in the in the public right-of-way, which is what traffic engineering is is here to do. So we did make a recommendation. Whether they do it or not is up to them.
Kevin, thanks.
Anybody else?
All right, thank you.
We're going to hear this, obviously.
Good morning. Next item is Agenda Item Four. The applicant is EquiKids EquiVets Therapeutic Writing Program. They have a property located at twenty-six twenty-six Heritage Drive. And this will be a conditional rezoning request. The applicant is requesting deferral of this application to the next available public hearing of the Planning Commission in order to provide additional supporting documentation. I'll stand by for questions.
Yeah.
Just curious, why, what would they be going from P one to AG two for? I'm just curious.
Their rationale for rezoning back to AG two is they believe that with agricultural zoning on the property, that it would confirm an agricultural nature of the use and that in turn, when they are seeking permits for sediment erosion control, stormwater management, maintenance of the property to address damage because of storms to their drainage ditches and such, they feel the permitting process would be more streamlined for them. And so that's the rationale.
Okay, just I was just curious.
Yeah.
So four is defer. What kind of timeframe on that? Thirty days indefinite?
I think to the next available public hearing. So I think to July
Eighth.
Eighth. It was advertised with the eighth. So I
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's
It's two weeks.
Two weeks, yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next item, item five, is a request by Thalia Road Partners LLC. The applicant is seeking a conditional rezoning from the B two Community Business District to conditional B four Mixed Use District to redevelop their property. Next slide. The nine point three acre property contains two parcels and has frontage along Virginia Beach Boulevard and Thalia Drive. The properties are currently developed with a nineteen thousand square foot grocery store, a sixty-five thousand square foot furniture store warehouse, and approximately thirty-two thousand square feet of retail and restaurant uses. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. The submitted concept plan depicts the retention of the existing grocery store and a ten thousand square foot freestanding commercial building located in the southwest corner of the property. Remaining commercial uses on the property will be demolished and replaced with three buildings that will contain up to two hundred and sixty-one multifamily dwelling units and up to sixty-five hundred square feet of new retail and restaurant uses. Building one is proposed as a five-story podium-style building with ground floor parking. The building will be sixty feet high and adjacent to the existing grocery store, maintaining a setback of approximately one hundred and seventy feet from Virginia Beach Boulevard. The structure is proposed to have a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments and will contain amenities for the apartment tenants, including a swimming pool, fitness center, and community room. Sixty-five hundred square feet of commercial space is planned for the ground floor of this building. And in addition to that, parking under the building will serve both the apartment and commercial uses. Building two, which is located north of building one, is also designed as a five-story structure with a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units as well as parking on the ground floor. No commercial units are proposed within this building. And then north of building two, sixteen three-story townhouses are proposed. Each townhouse will contain a single-car garage and a parking space within their individual driveway. The concept plan depicts five hundred and fifty-three parking spaces, which is less than the six hundred and thirteen spaces required by the zoning ordinance. As permitted by the ordinance, the applicant has submitted a shared parking analysis for review by the zoning administrator to support the reduced number of spaces. This shared parking analysis was found acceptable for the development, given that the periods of peak parking demand for the apartment and commercial uses occurred at different times. Where possible on the property, existing mature trees will be maintained, particularly along the northern edge of the site adjacent to the single-family residential neighborhood. A twenty-foot vegetated buffer is proposed, which exceeds the minimum width requirement of fifteen feet. Foundation plantings, parking lot interior plantings, and enhanced street frontage plantings are also proposed throughout the site. Excellent. Excellent. The architecture reflects a traditional style of residential elements, including mansored roofs and dormers. The use of varied materials reduces the massing of buildings one and two, and the substantial use of brick along the first floor will architecturally ground the buildings, providing continuity of design between the existing and proposed buildings. And this brick base will also help to screen the parking underneath the buildings. The color palette of the upper floors include neutral colors to complement this brick. Excellent. While smaller in scale, the townhouses use many of the same architectural elements and color palette found in buildings one and two to achieve a cohesive look. Excellent. Even though the comprehensive plan only recommends submittal of stormwater management strategies for projects in the Southern Rivers watershed, the applicant submitted such a strategy to staff for review. The strategy addresses the impacts of increased rainfall amounts and sea level rise. This is above and beyond the current stormwater requirements. Final design of the stormwater management strategy will be made during the site plan submittal process of the project. While the proposed proffers are found to be legally sufficient, the numbers shown for the multifamily units and commercial development in proffer one are slightly above what is shown on the concept plan and shared parking analysis. Revised proffers have been submitted to the city attorney for review and are expected to be approved prior to the city council hearing. As you will hear today, there are many in the surrounding community who have significant concerns with the application. And these concerns include compatibility, relationship of the architecture to the surrounding neighborhood and adjacent properties, generation of traffic, function of the nearest intersection, adequacy of parking, provision of stormwater management, and the adequacy of public schools to accommodate the schoolchildren from this development. Staff is recommending approval of the application. And that concludes my briefing. I'll stand by for any questions. Thank you. Thank you.
Bill, I have a question. Can you tell me, the townhouses, are they for sale or leased?
That's a very good question, and I will have to defer to the applicant on that. I'm not sure that decision's been made yet.
I'm just curious. I know we're gonna hear this. Whitney, you got any question?
No.
I've asked all mine.
Have you asked them?
At least until the hearing.
Okay. All right, well, we'll just keep on going. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Item 6 is a modification of conditions request. The applicant is seeking to modify conditions that were approved with the conditional use permit in 2014 and 2016 for 111. The applicant has requested that the item be deferred indefinitely in order to engage interested stakeholders, and staff is agreeable to this request.
Great, thank you.
All right, moving on to Item 7. This is a request for a conditional use permit for assembly use on a 63 acres located in Blackwater in the Princess Anne District. Per the applicant's request, the application was deferred at the October 9th and December 5th Planning Commission hearings in order to engage interested stakeholders. The Agriculture Advisory Commission has reviewed the request and is opposed to having this type of uses on agricultureally-zoned property when they are not ancillary to the agriculture use. As a result, the applicant reduced the number of outdoor events from 50 to no more than 30 events per year, and the number of attendees from 250 to 150 per event. Except that up to five of the 30 events may have up to 250 attendees. In addition, amplified music except for acoustical music will be prohibited after 10:00 PM, and all events will be concluded by 11:00 PM. Even with the revisions to the events, the Agriculture Advisory Commission is opposed to the request. In addition to the decrease in the number of events and attendees, the site plan was revised in order was revised to increase the venue building from 4,200 square feet to 5,565 square feet. Staff would like to make a correction on Page 2 of the staff report. On Bullet 3, the change to the building venue size should be 1,365 square foot and not 1,245 square foot. The additional square footage for the structure is for future expansion on the north side of the venue building. The applicant resides in the existing single-family dwelling on the property and operates a horse boarding facility. The subject property is surrounded by agricultureally-zoned properties and land uses. The closest residential dwelling is approximately 1,000 feet from the proposed venue building. Events will be held both indoors and outdoors. There is no limit on the number of indoor events as they will be hosted inside the 5,565-square-foot building, and the maximum number of attendees is based on the capacity authorized by the building official. Access to the site is via a paved driveway from Princess Anne. The applicant has requested that alternative parking surfaces comprised of bluestone sand and gravel be allowed for onsite parking. The request is supported by the planning director pursuant to Section 2 of B5 of the zoning ordinance. A minimum of 50 parking spaces is required for the proposed venue with a maximum of 250 attendees. The proposed 42,000-square-foot parking area far exceed the parking requirement. As condition, indoor events will be concluded by 10:00 PM, I'm sorry, outdoor events will be concluded by 10:00 PM and indoor events will be concluded by 11:00 PM. While indoor events is not restricted to the maximum number of events per year or maximum number of attendees, that will be conducted within the enclosed building. And considering that a parcel is 63 acres in size, heavily wooded, and the nearest resident dwelling is located over 1,000 feet from the proposed venue area, staff recommends that a proposal be approved with the conditions listed in the report. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
I got one.
Yes, sir.
So, we deferred this how long ago?
It was. October and December.
And then you said for the stakeholders, is that like adjacent property owner?
There was mainly discussion with the Agriculture Advisory Commission.
Not the?
There was some discussion with the surrounding neighbor as well.
And what, no opposition?
We do have two letters of opposition that were included in your package.
Adjacent property?
Yeah.
Do we have anybody here to speak on this?
No, just applicant.
Steve, you wanna go first?
Sure. Yeah, I think we need to hear this for a multitude of reasons. That's number one, I'd like to hear what the applicant or his attorney has to say. And then I can maybe explain a lot of things that, why they, you know, one reason, for some reason, why the Agriculture Advisory Commission said no. Be much easier then, you know, rather than do it now. Better, so I think we should hear it.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'd like to get just a little bit of history of this whole assembly use in Agzona. We were requested two or three years ago by a couple of farmers to look into allowing assembly uses in the agricultural area as a way for, because farmers not the most lucrative business all the time, as a way to get extra income for the farming operation. And we, the agriculture community wrestled with this thing for some time. Ms. Wilson was involved in several of the meetings, and trying to come up with what we thought would be a number that the people down there could live with. And we came up with various numbers, everybody pulled a number out of their hat and pulled a number out of their hat, and we just couldn't come up with anything. So it kinda went mute for a little while, and then last year, this application came up, and it regenerated the interest in what we needed to do about this. This is a, this application is a commercial application on agricultural land, is what it is. And the Agriculture Advisory, when it was deferred in December and Agriculture Advisory met in January, and they, Mr. Nutter and all, the applicant was there, and they gave their spiel, and Agriculture Advisory Commission discussed it at length and said they didn't like it, and they wanted to see if we could come up with some way to change the ordinance to disallow this thing instead of being a use permit. So we, a group met, Mr. Tahan and I think Carolyn may have been at the meeting, and the Ag people from the Ag Department and Steve and myself were at the meeting, trying to develop something that we thought we could live with. And everybody went around the table, and for about an hour, we discussed possibly this, possibly this. Finally, we ended up saying the best thing to do is take it out completely. So Kay has drawn up an ordinance and to go back to the Agriculture Advisory Commission to eliminate the assembly use in agricultural zoning, is take conditional use permit right out of it. And so, the Agriculture Advisory has not had the opportunity to review this because of the pandemic that came and they couldn't meet in April, so it's been delayed. So, this, I guess this application is still being looked at according to the way the ordinance is written and not changed. But I just want to tell you, the agriculture community is not in favor of this operation taking place. We've got one or two down there that were approved in different areas in the use permit process, but not near the numbers of this. And there's no way that the agriculture community wants to support this. So, I'm just giving you a history of what's transpired. It was really discussed to help farmers, a lot of their produce guys who got U-PIC operations and all, and they've had people say, we'd like to come have a wedding at your place or something like that. And that's how it really got started, but they decided to nix it. Yeah, I think you can do two or three, three, I think, if special events a year. Four, four a year, by right, but they think that's enough. That's the way it is, sir. So we will, I will not be supporting this today.
Jack?
This is just a general question, I think I know the answer. So what's the residential development in the agricultural area, agricultural zoning? What is the minimum lot size for development of a property?
Yeah, AG, how many, what's the minimum lot size?
Or, so that's a.
That's a big word.
It's a big question. If you were to create a lot, to build a single-family home is 15 acres. It's 15 acres, right. So you can't build a home on anything less than? Unless it was a previously existing lot that hasn't had its right block from the. Right, if it was like a 12-acre lot already.
You can, you can.
You can build.
Yeah, 15 acres determines the density, but you don't really have to have 15 acres to build.
If it was a previously existing lot, you would have the ability, that, you would have the right to build on the lot. If you were to create new lots, you'd have to meet the 15 acre requirement. You'd have to meet 15 acres. Correct. Okay, because there are plenty of residential dwellings down there on, far less than. Yes. Than 15 acres. So, so how were those, how were those created? Those lots previously existed? Those lots previously existed.
Or they could, or they could be part of the Ag Reserve program, which when you sell to the Ag Reserve program, you can eliminate or cut out a certain portion.
Then, right, and you can carve out, you could say.
Yes, well, that can be less than 15 acres because it's still part of that complete park. I mean, that's where, and the other ones have probably been there forever, you know, for one way or another, way prior to any kind of development, regulations, septic or whatever. They may be torn down and then replaced, but they probably, the site has probably been there a long time.
Sir, I have a question, and I don't own any land down there, and I hope this isn't taken the wrong way, but what is the exit strategy for somebody who owns a farm down there? Let's say they own 60 acres, and farming, as we know, is not the most lucrative industry. And the little bit I know about farming is that you really can't make it work farming 60 acres. You really need to farm a lot of land to make it work.
You can if you have cannabis. I guess you can do it if you don't get caught.
So, so what is the exit strategy for an owner that lives down there? Because typically, their kids, a lot of times their kids don't want the land because they're not gonna go into farming, they've, you know, gone on to do something else as a career. I'm just curious, like, what is the, I mean, to be paper-rich, pocket-poor?
There are a couple of different things. One, some people can sell it to, well, they may want to put it in Ag Reserve program and get that lump of money to withdraw them interest for 25 years, and then sell the land for agricultural to somebody who wants to actually farm it. There's some people who will just divide it up and develop the property. I mean, the best, again, most likely it'll be large lot developments because, you know, you can't have so much density. In this case, it was a horse farm, and the people decided they wanted to move out, so these people went there and bought the horse farm, trying to change the, basically, they say they're using it as ancillary use, but basically, you're gonna have multitude of events per year, and it's not an agricultural activity, it's a commercial, commercial activity. So, that, but people would buy it for a horse farm, or they can farm, you can have successful farming operations on small acreages like this. That's where a lot of your produce people who raise small acreages of things, you know, the U-PIC type people, the farm-to-table type people, and there's several, there's several farmers down that way doing that now on smaller acreages, you know. So it is, it is, it is not.
There are alternatives.
Farmers will find a way to survive. But this property isn't up to be subdivided any further, it's up to change, basically, they want to put this assembly use there to, so they can generate more income by this operation, it's a commercial operation, and the way, the way I look at it, and a lot of people down there look at, this is a commercial operation vying on cheap agricultural land, is what it is, so.
John, is there a number of events that the agricultures will look at, say yes, or, I mean, or they just do the four-year? Just four-year, they.
They.
For special events?
They weren't into it, you know.
Just dumb scares.
No, they just said, we'll eliminate the use, and Kay and Bobby, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but we'll eliminate that use entirely.
So that ordinance is getting ready to come to y'all to look at eventually?
Once they meet, and I guess they'll probably be in July, hopefully.
July 13.
July 13?
July 13.
Okay.
But until then, we're working under the old ordinance, which in theory, you know, people can apply for these type of things. You know, they said they cut the number of events from 50 to 30, well, I mean, and when you don't, when people don't want anything, that's not much of a cut, the way they look at it, you know. It's still, still pretty intense use.
George?
Is there, do we have a copy of their report from the commission? From the agricultural.
It was in the supplement.
It's in one of the supplements.
Oh, it is, okay.
I don't know which one.
The one that was in the first.
Yes.
I do want to correct myself, and I apologize for the confusion. If you are in an area that has certain soil types, essentially poorly draining soils, you're limited to 15 acres. Your ability to subdivide properties, depending if everything is good, is minimum lot size is 1 acre in the AG. So, that is how some of the smaller ones, in relation, 1 acre is still fairly large, but in relation to the larger agricultural lots, that's how some of the smaller ones exist.
Does that mean they could do 63?
You know, I've heard this before, but just repeat that again. It depends on the soil size, so, soil type. So, if it's, if it's a certain soil type that is essentially poorly draining, you are limited to the density that you're permitted to subdivide the properties. Some of the smaller lots that you see, if they did not previously exist, would fall under the regular requirement, which is a, which is a 1 acre minimum lot area requirement. So 1 acre? Yeah. Right, because before it was, if they could do, the soil could percolate, and I guess it switched to, then it switched to just being soil type in general, just being, because they, it was like state banned the localities being able to use the percolation as a, because, as a requirement because of the onsite septic systems.
Can I make a statement? Before the, before the state changed its septic, its septic tank rules, or septic system rules, if it wasn't, if the site wouldn't perk, you could cut out three acres and ditch it, and you could put a septic tank there. And if your soil would perk, you could, you know, in a conventional septic system, you could put it on 1 acre. All right, the state changed its regulations, now you can put it on small acres with these mound systems or whatever they got now. So there's several different types of septic system. The density, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, is on class 3 soils, it's 1 for 15 acres. In other words, if you got 100-acre farm, you can put a house for every 15 acres. But if it's on class 1 soil or class 2 soil, I forget what the classes are, but if it's a better soils, you can build one for every 10 acres. So if you got 100-acre farm and it's good soils, you can build 10 houses on it. You can build all the houses on 1-acre sites if you'd like, and then the rest of it would be, you know, could be farmed, if you want to do that, that way. So, so that's, am I wrong, Bobby?
Yeah, you're correct, sir.
Yeah, you're correct there.
Yeah. The, the density is the key. It's, it's either one for 15 or one for 10. Now, when the, when the city figures the density for agriculture reserve program, they do straight, straight across the board, one for 10, when they do for ag reserve program.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, well, we'll hear this. And, got a nice list there. All right. Next up?
Aubrey. We're trying to see if Aubrey, uh, Mr. Trouble Clock is available, but, um, the next item is, uh, by Tony J. Sadi and Lena Azar Sadi for subdivision variance. They are requesting a deferral of their application to the July 8th public hearing. They have some concerns that they're working through with staff as far as the subdivision variance.
Good morning.
Okay, item number nine, the city of Virginia Beach is seeking approval for a special exception for alternative compliance for recurring outdoor assembly uses and open-air market special events on the convention and sports center campus. Next slide. Anchoring the west end of the Central Beach District, the convention center and sports center work together to create a major entertainment venue campus. The newly created relationship between these two large-scale venues and their associated parking results in the 19th Street corridor becoming an integral part of the visitor experience as they move through the campus and between the two venues. The 19th Street corridor continues to the east, providing connectivity to the vibe creative district, dome site, and ocean front. Next slide. The city is seeking the special exception for alternative compliance for these recurring special events to occur along and around the 19th Street corridor. This will allow for temporary and diverse setups to occur on a continual basis without further, further administrative approvals. The ability to activate outdoor spaces will create pedestrian-oriented activities, provide visual interest, and contribute to creating memorable experiences for the visitors. The area highlighted in pink or plaza spaces within which outdoor assembly and open-air market activities may occur. The areas highlighted in purple or parking lot areas within, within which large-scale sponsor activations could occur on a very limited basis. Only a few of the largest scaled events will need these types of spaces. In this presentation, we are providing sample layouts and images of elements that could be temporarily deployed as events move in and out of the convention center. The ever-changing nature of the site and future bookings make the following examples representative in nature. For each event will have unique setups and needs. Additionally, any special events that will require street closures will continue to follow the special event permitting application process. Next slide. Uh, this is a sample layout within the sports center plaza, showing how large tents, vendor tents, and food trucks could be set up within the approximately 35,000 square foot space. Outdoor assembly uses will be scheduled to occur between 7:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. Anticipated events include concerts or amplified music that may occur for up to four hours, festivals that could occur for up to eight hours, indoor event overflow could occur for up to 12 hours and would be a part of the programming of the conference or the sporting event. Other activities could include food vendors, alcohol sales, retail sales, sponsor activations, roaming performances, stage performances, or public speakers. The management and support will consist of 20 convention center staff, 15 sports center staff, and then contracted personnel will be hired to assist with larger events. Next slide. So examples of potential site elements that could occur in these areas will include stages with lighting, food trucks, and both of these have, power has been provided and planned for within the plaza to meet the electrical needs. Uh, other potential, uh, events could be large-scale fitness classes or participatory games that could occur, that could occur outdoors and complement the indoor scheduling. Next slide. Also anticipated are inflatables or tents that could be deployed on the site. Temporary barriers are also anticipated to utilize for ticketed events and also to create separation and clear paths as needed. Uh, there's also the anticipation of the need for temporary additional lighting for events that have later hours or for those that are scheduled within the shoulder season. Next slide. Okay, so this is a sample layout of a, uh, open-air market, uh, set up with large tents and many smaller vendor tents, and again, food trucks could also fit into the plaza space. Uh, these would be scheduled from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for up to two days a week. It is anticipated that these will operate as more pop-up markets with tents and merchandise that will be, be removed at the end of each day, and trash cans will be provided at the ratio of one for 1,000 square foot of sales area. Next slide. So these are just example, examples of more of your quick pop-up installations that could be easily removed. So tents, vendors with merchandise, tables and chairs, artists and musicians. Next slide. So this layout considers the potential for the plaza space to host artistic installations as well, which could be a nice complement to the connectivity between the campus and the neighboring vibe creative district and Mocha. Next slide. So these elements could be placed within plazas or, uh, open spaces. They could include mural panels, balloons, or inflatables, hanging elements that can engage with the site, perhaps in some unexpected ways. Next slide. Additionally, lighting displays could also fall into this realm of artistic installation. This type of installation could be add lighting to areas of the campus to assist in creating the year-round destination desired in the shoulder seasons and winter months. Next slide. So here, we're returning back to the purple highlighted areas that occur in the parking lots. These two areas, again, are going to be utilized on very rare occasions for only the largest of events. Overall, the campus has around 2,456 parking spaces. Um, the north parking lot of 19th Street is 138 spaces, and it's accessible from both ends, so if they wanted to use a smaller portion of that area, you could still have parking occur in the other. And the parking lot to the west of the sports center contains 106 spaces. Next slide. And so why these are brought into this application is for larger installations that may include buses or large semi-trucks that need, uh, a larger space, uh, temporary structures that need to be delivered to the site, uh, ninja-type, ninja or warrior-type obstacle courses that would need to be constructed, uh, or temporary playing fields that would, uh, that could be set up, again, to support the sports center events. We have received Zier's letters of opposition or support. Uh, the applicant has agreed to all the conditions, and staff is recommending approval of this application. Happy to answer any questions.
Do they have any questions? No? Thank you.
You're writing against them?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, we're, we're having technical difficulties with Mr. Miller at this point, so if we can skip over his item and we can continue to do the presentations, so if we can go to item number 11?
Okay.
With Ms. Peebles.
Summer, we're now ready for you, for your item. Thank you.
The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit at 133 Actus Avenue, located in the Sea-Tac community. This 12,000 square foot parcel is owned R 7.5 residential. According to city record, records, the single-family dwelling was constructed in 1995 and has three bedrooms. Since the dwelling has three bedrooms, three onsite parking spaces are required and can be met in the driveway. All other requirements of section 241.2 of the zoning ordinance pertaining to short-term rentals can be reasonably met. I'll stand by for questions.
Anybody have any questions? George? No? Click this on the consent.
Next item is item number 12, 3D Builder Investments LLC. Deb, we're ready for you. Thank you. Deb, we're ready for you now. Apparently Will is back, so we can go back to Will's presentation if you'd like.
All right. Thanks for the time.
We're ready for you for item number 10. Thank you.
Okay, um, hopefully you guys can hear me. Okay, thank you. All right. So this is, um, item 10, address is 2222 East Berry Circle. It's in the Bayside District. Uh, the property is approximately 7,500 square feet and is located within the R 5R residential district. It's in the Shore Drive overlay. This is a two-unit condominium, uh, that exists on the site with only one short-term rental being requested, the 2222, uh, address. According to city records, the duplex was built in 2009. There are no records of zoning violations relating to short-term rental found associated with this subject address. There are city no parking on pavement signs posted on both sides of the 2200 block of East Berry Circle. However, parking in the grassy area in the city right-of-way is permitted. Um, the number of bedrooms in the short-term rental is three. The number of parking spaces required is three. Can we go ahead and go to the, um, site plan or the parking plan? All right. And, um, let's see, number of parking spaces required is three, the number of parking spaces provided is three, two in the driveway and one in the garage. Um, by utilizing the garage, this keeps vehicle number three from crossing the right of, into the right-of-way, uh, over the property line there, as you can see. However, there is 43 feet of actual concrete on that, in that driveway itself. The property is located in the Berry Gardens, Gardens neighborhood, which is, was plotted in 1950 as a subdivision within the larger community of Chesapeake Beach. Berry Gardens consists of 26 R 5R residential district zoning lots abutting West Berry Circle, East Berry Circle, and North Greenwell Road. 21 of the structures within the subdivision are duplexes and five are single-family dwellings. The parking plan submitted by the applicant depicts all three required off-street parking spaces located onsite, two within the private driveway, one in the garage, as permitted by section 24121 of the city zoning ordinance. The zoning administrator reviewed the parking plan and deemed it acceptable. However, a condition is recommended that assures the garage will always be available to short-term rental occupants. Based on these considerations, staff recommends approval of the request. With the recommended conditions, there are no known oppositions to this request. Uh, this concludes my presentation, and I will stand by for any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you, Will. Anybody have any questions? No? Consent? Okay. Going back to 12?
We'll go back to 12. Deb, we're ready for you.
Item 12 is 3D Builder Investments LLC. Is an application for short-term rental located at 42121st Street. Next slide. The subject site is a 7,860 square foot parcel located within the OR Form-Based Code District. Next slide. The site is developed with a two duplex dwellings, four units total, on one lot. Each unit is owned individually, and the property itself is jointly owned under condominium agreement. According to city records, the unit was built in 2019. No records of zoning violation were found associated with the subject address. Next slide. Number of bedrooms in the short-term rental is four. Number of parking spaces required is four. Number of parking spaces provided is four. Two onsite and two off-site leased spaces within a quarter-mile walking distance at the 25th Street City Parking Garage. Next slide. There are additional separate applications for short-term rental use pending consideration on the subject site and on the neighboring site. Both units in the rear duplex on this property received a recommendation for approval from Planning Commission, as well as the property to the east, which has the same configuration of two duplexes on one property. Staff is recommending approval. The applicant has reviewed and agreed to the conditions in the report. That concludes my summary, and I will stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? George?
Consent. I didn't hear, was there any opposition?
No.
Thank you.
Next item is item number 13. Applicant is John Lovering. Deb, we're ready for you.
Short-term rental located at 1718 Baltic Avenue. Next slide. The site is a 16,800 square foot parcel located in the OR Form-Based Code District. Next slide. The proposed two-bedroom short-term rental will occupy one unit of a 14-unit condominium complex that was constructed in 1984. Each unit has a designated parking space. There are 21 parking spaces onsite. No records of zoning violation were associated with this subject address. Next slide. Next slide. Number of bedrooms in the short-term rental are two. The number of parking spaces required is two. There is one space onsite in the designated parking space, as well as one leased guest parking space. Next slide. Two additional applications for short-term rental use are pending consideration on the same site at the same time the staff report was ref, was written. One was considered by city council on June 9th and approved. The second will be, is expected to be considered by city council on July 14th. Both applications propose to lease one additional onsite guest space for the duration of the short-term rental use and shall provide proof of lease prior to operation. Staff is recommending approval. The application, the applicant has reviewed and agreed to conditions. That concludes my summary, and I will stand by for questions.
I have a question. Deb, um, the other two short-term rentals in this building, have we seen this particular applicant before in that building?
I'm sorry, have we what?
Applic, is it the same person changing this to short-term rental as we've seen before?
It's not the same person on the application.
Madam Chair, it is not. They, they're different applicants.
Okay. Thank you. George?
Uh, consent.
All right. Put this on consent then.
The last item, item number 14, is a request by Timothy Hanlon. Summer will present this item to the Planning Commission. Summer, we're ready for you.
Thank you, Bill. This property is located at 2541 Seabou Avenue. This application was previously deferred by Planning Commission, March 11th. Next slide. The property is approximately 5,555 square feet and is located within the R 5R residential district, Shore Drive overlay. Next slide. According to city records, the single-family home was built in 1980. The dwelling has four bedrooms, thus four onsite parking spaces are required. Next slide. Kevin Hirschberger inspected the site, and the parking space under the stairs is 9 by 18 and can fit one parking space. Next slide. Next slide. Access to the site is via a 16-foot easement along the southern edge of the property. No parking is permitted within this easement as it serves the adjacent property as well. And the applicant has submitted a photo of the garage indicating that it can be used for one parking space. Next slide. Okay. The submitted parking plan shows three of the four required parking spaces accommodated entirely onsite. One of those spaces is located on a concrete area beneath the exterior stairway. The fourth parking space encroaches slightly
The fourth parking space encroaches slightly into the Seaview Avenue right-of-way. As this encroachment does not inhibit vehicular or pedestrian traffic, the parking plan was deemed acceptable by the zoning administrator. It is staff's opinion that all other requirements of Section 241.2 of the zoning ordinance for short-term rental use can be reasonably met. I'll stand by to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for this? Okay. Mr. Redmond's not here, so go ahead and put it on. Thank you. All right. That wraps this up.
That is all we have for the presentations, Madam Chair.
Anything else?
Can I, can I go through just real quick what we have down here? What I've got down here, anyway? Starting item one, two, and nine on a consent. To be heard, three, five, and seven. The short-term rentals to be heard, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. Deferral, item four for two weeks, item seven, item six indefinitely, and item eight two weeks. Good? Okay. Take a second.
Good? All right, I...
It was easy.
I need a person to do the prayer. Any volunteers?
I'll do it.
Thank you, Mike. And somebody to lead the pledge. Thank you. And we're doing introductions, right? All right, so, and then we need one person to introduce all of us.
I'll do it.
All right, thank you. I think that takes care of everything. Better for this? Wait, all right, then. On that note, we are going to close the informal.